Good morning and welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for April the 13th. All the council is here. The first item on our agenda is to review the agenda for the April 17th formal council meeting, so please refer to that document. First several items are various liquor license applications. And thank goodness, again, we have a bingo application. One of these days I'm going to go check out, make sure those bingo applications are being used correctly.
District 5.
District 5, okay. Let me know. Let's go together, okay. Item 5 are various purchase contracts. Mr. Thompson?
Chris, on item 5K, have we ever considered utilizing like EBIT or something like that, one of the vocational type schools for some of the auto body work?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, actually, we've had a little bit of history, but there are some constraints, so I'll have Pete and his folks talk about that.
Morning, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson. We have used EBIT for a lot of different things. Some of that was body work, some of it was general repair, and we've also donated a bunch of equipment over there to help in, you know, student and teaching aids. But I would introduce John Melhan, who's our maintenance superintendent, who can fill you in a little bit on what we've done with the EBIT Body Shop.
Good morning. So on the EBIT vehicles that we've sent there, when we send them there, they have to fit them in with their course of teaching. So if we send a vehicle in there for just a paint job, they have to fit it in when they're actually doing paint. Now, the auto body program consists of body repair, mechanical repair, and the body. So there's only a period of time we can send it in there, and it ends up being there for about a month or so, depending on when we catch the class that's being done. We've had them also do some pit crash cars where they actually did the metal reinforced bumpers on the front. Those vehicles there were a little more intense. They had those for about six months. But yeah, we've used them from time to time. They usually will call up or will call them, but to do it all the time, that period of time to catch it and get it done and have that vehicle held for them such an extended period of time interferes with being able to get the work turned out. So we don't do a lot, but we work with them a little bit. We also have the EBIT employee, the EBIT students come over and do a shadowing program with us, too, so that they see how we do business, and we do that for the light duty and the heavy duty programs that they offer.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions regarding that these gentlemen can help us with? Thank you, guys. Thanks for running a great, complete service. We appreciate it. Any other questions, gentlemen, under purchase contracts, item 5? Item 6 are various resolutions. Yes, Mr. Luna.
Mr. Brady, the items on number 6 are basically pass-throughs, right? Is that correct?
That is correct. We, it's just, we're required to acknowledge those grants that may come through Mesa, ask at least acknowledge those before they can go on to get approved by the Indian community for McDowell. So it's just a part of their normal process.
We appreciate the Indian community entertaining our request for funding on a lot of this stuff. Item 7 relating to art space projects. Item 8 is various zoning cases. Mr. Thompson?
Chris, I'd like to pull 8B off of consent.
Okay. We can do that. Now, 8B is an interesting case. It was, staff was recommending denial, planning a zoning, recommended approval. Mr. Wesley, can you give us some background on this?
Yes, Mayor, Council. This has been a bit of a challenging case as we've worked with the applicant over the last several months for getting it to this point. The general plan designates this area, west of Crisman, south of Southern, down to Hampton, and on down to the freeway, as an area for employment. The application that you have before you is for some PEP, planned employment park zoning along Southern, but the bulk of the property, over 13 acres along Hampton, is proposed for residential development, what we call residential CETA, a rental product of basically single, small, single-family structures. The application, as we looked at it from the staff perspective, because of the desire for employment uses in this location along the freeway, it's been in our general plan for many years to have employment uses in this area, and the city's overall interest in improving the jobs-to-housing balance, as we look at it staff, that led to our recommendation for denial on the case. There are some maybe extenuating circumstances in the area, the way the development pattern is immediately around here is maybe not as conducive for the employment uses as we would like. The applicant pointed to the fact that the area just south of this has been zoned, planned employment park, and had a site plan approval on it for several years, and they haven't been able to get invited to move forward with that type of development. And the P&amp;Z Board also looked at the fact that there's a lot of employment area designated further east, and so they felt comfortable going ahead and recommending approval because for what it is, it's a very well-designed project, and if it weren't for the fact of the desire for employment areas along the freeway, it's a good design for the area. So the general plan has lots of different aspects to it, and they selected some other aspects of the general plan and felt it was consistent with those, and therefore recommended approval.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from council about this? I guess, obviously, the applicant will be alerted that it's off the consent agenda, and we'll look forward to hearing more about it on Monday night. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Could I go back to Art Space just a minute?
Of course.
Sorry, I made a note, but the note wasn't in my brain, but I have it here on my iPad. Natalie, could I ask about how Art Space coming? I know there was some funding concerns. We have given now a million dollars to them, and just how's the whole project coming?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Freeman. The project is coming along, and they are planning to close on May 4th and have a grand opening on May 24th. So they're confident that they're going to meet all of their funding requirements, and they're groundbreaking, sorry, what did I say? Ground, grand opening, groundbreaking.
They went pretty fast.
On May 24th, yes. May 24th, yes. Yes, so, yeah, so the action before you really is to just make sure that we're solidifying the extra $500,000 in home dollars, and also just putting in some protective kind of timelines to make sure that the project happens the way it's supposed to.
And I was reading the report that if they don't meet the timelines, then...
Then the funding comes back to the city of Mesa.
Comes back to the city for reallocation?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Probably worth noting that, I'm sorry, it's probably worth noting that home dollars and CBG dollars are currently being discussed in Washington DC, and there's a reason, but there's some chance that we won't have this half a million, that we're passing through some federal dollars as we have previously. So we all, I'll have our fingers crossed that there will be home dollars to pass on to Art Space.
And then the development agreement and our home agreement also does provide a protection that if something does happen that's out of our control from the federal dollars, that Art Space will actually cover that funding. So the additional $500,000 at play, they would have to cover, and they have agreed to do that.
Okay. Anything else on agenda? Item 8, any zoning cases to talk about? If not, 9 is to take comments on various ordinances. 10 are approving subdivision plats. And then, we do have an item off the consent agenda, item 11A. And I guess there was a 2-1 vote at SAT Committee. Can someone give me just a little bit of an update as to what the issue is here? I know at least three of us have been very well briefed on this, but I'm a little behind.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. Yes, the proposed ordinance that is listed under 11A on the upcoming council agenda would allow for staff to move forward with a streetlight pilot program to study the use, the more expansive use of LED streetlights within the city. Specifically, the proposed ordinance designates two areas within Mesa, the Desert Uplands area, as well as the area served by City of Mesa Electric, you know, in the downtown area. And the proposed ordinance would allow staff to vary the approved lighting levels by up to 50%. In other words, lower, you know, the standard lighting levels. This would dovetail into a streetlight master plan that the staff intends to work on and present to council sometime in 2018. Our intent is to engage a consultant to do an inventory of our existing streetlight stock. We have about 40,000 streetlights throughout the city. Most of them are high-pressure sodium. More recently, new developments and on capital projects, we have been installing the LED lights. So the first thing we would do is do an inventory and sort of map lighting levels throughout the city. There are some areas of the city that have no lights. Obviously, there are parts of the city that have either high-pressure sodium or LED lights. Further, we would work with the consultant to determine appropriate lighting levels. It may come out through the study that we'll do that some areas of the city should continue to have lower lighting levels than others, depending on land uses and that sort of thing. We'll also look at new technology to see where technology is taking us and how we can perhaps leverage other technologies. Wi-Fi, there's a program in LA, although we've done some of the work here already, working with providers such as Verizon to integrate cell service, you know, into the structures. Also look at the lifecycle costs of the LED fixtures. You may recall that staff did a presentation to council last fall, and initially, we were looking at about 11-year payback on an almost $14 million investment if we did a one-time conversion of all the existing HPS lights. We'll also work with Mr. McCray and the city energy resources staff to determine if there's a new rate structure that may help in that payback period. Obviously, it has to work both for the utility as well as the cost of our program, and would also include a public outreach component to seek feedback, not only on the lighting levels that we would recommend to council, but what's called the color. When lights were installed in the Desert Uplands area, I think there were some concerns from the folks in that area, not only about the level of the light, but how the light looks. The high-pressure sodium lights are more of a yellow, whereas the LED, it's a blue light, but more white. So we're really looking to put together a comprehensive proposal to bring back to council for consideration, like I said, in about a year, year and a half.
Thank you very much. Mr. Freeman? I'm sorry? Check it.
No, I was on the committee.
Oh, okay.
RJ, I have a question. Desert Uplands, do they have a sub-area plan by chance? I can't remember if you do or not.
Yes, Councilmember, they do.
So do they, in their sub-area plan, do they reflect some of their lighting concerns like you brought up that... Now, the reason I say that, because I drove some of the lights that were being put in, and those light poles are probably eight to 10 feet taller than the existing high-pressure sodium light poles. So I don't know how that's going to integrate in their community and if that feedback's important with them, so...
Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, in their sub-area plan, they do have some modifications to the street lighting requirements, particularly on residential streets and collector streets. There are even some areas where minimal or no lighting is required on residential streets. On the arterial streets, pretty much, they're required to follow standard city practice for lighting. There is a stipulation in their sub-area plan relative to the pole height that limits it to, I believe, 35 feet, which we've complied with.
Okay. Yeah, because I was visiting with a friend who had the new LEDs on their property. He was sitting in his backyard, and he felt like, my gosh, did the sun just come up at night? So, I mean, he was concerned about that lighting as well, so...
As part of the pilot study, we will be adjusting the lighting levels, and we'll also be putting shielding on some of those lights, which will shield it from the backside and limit the throwback towards residents. We hope to address that issue.
Yeah, because I'm sure we might get some complaints in the future about what we do.
So, Mayor, Council, maybe, RJ, you should explain, why do we have to bring an ordinance to the council? I mean, we don't typically bring an ordinance to do a study, so what is it that is needed? Why is the council being asked to approve an ordinance today?
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Mayor, members of the council, the current ordinance is stipulate a standard for streetlighting. The national standard, it's an NC standard called RPA, and I won't bore you with the details. I probably couldn't explain them if I tried. But we need council's authorization to vary from that standard. Otherwise, we're required to install streetlights or have developers install streetlights to the current standard. So what this ordinance will give us, flexibility to lower those standards and do testing. And if the sunset period expires and no action is taken by the council, which would be the end of 2019, then we would revert to the standard that we have in place today.
So this would give us flexibility, and maybe, as Councilmember Freeman was suggesting, to work with neighborhoods in different areas where we may, it may be appropriate to look at with the new technology, to allow us to kind of dim the lights to a certain degree or use different filters, and so... But we can't just go do that because we, there is a national standard, a standard out there, and it's on, in our code.
It is.
So we have to, we need the council to give us this pilot program flexibility to go out and kind of see what other light levels and colors that we could use.
Correct.
Mr. Luna?
Thank you, RJ, and Gordon, and Carrie. Obviously, in District 5, we have the dark sky ordinance, and we want to make sure that we meet the standards. And this will give us an opportunity to test out what works in those areas. As you know, my community's been very vocal about the lighting there, and this, as a result of this, we're conducting the study. So I really appreciate you working with the neighbors over in District 5, and where they have the dark sky ordinance. Thank you so much.
Mr. Winkle?
I also appreciate that, because they put a new LED outside of my house, and it's almost like it's daytime at night. I mean, no joke.
So is there anything going on here other than just giving staff the flexibility to adjust the brightness of the lights? Does this have to do with the timing of when we switch to LED? Are we going to do it incrementally, or are we going to do it all at one time? Is that part of the issues that this ordinance addresses?
Mayor, the ordinance itself only addresses the technical standard for the lighting level and gives staff that flexibility to vary it. The streetlight master plan that we will work on will include a component of recommending options for conversion of the existing system.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment. Yeah, so I was, obviously, we chatted on the SAT Committee, and some of my concerns with what we're doing is the allocation of $200,000 to do the pilot program is also part of this as well, not just simply the ordinance. So when I dug deeper and I looked at different municipalities, you have like the city of Los Angeles, a seven times larger than our city, and they installed a GE system that allows them to dynamically adjust the brightness of the lights at any given time. So they're doing things like if you pick up the phone and dial 911, they can light up the entire neighborhood at 100% brightness versus if the 50% is the normal that the citizens want. So the reason why I didn't support this was the fact that I think that we're going backwards. I think that allocating $200,000 to do a pilot program to determine the amount of lumens that we want to push down on our streetlights doesn't make sense, because if we put a system in place that allows us to dynamically adjust the brightness at any given time from a Mesa centralized location, then it almost becomes irrelevant what the required lumen level is, because you can change it at any given time. So that was the reason why I opposed it. I think that we should be more forward-thinking in how we're going to implement these technologies rather than doing the pilot study, which, again, I don't, I don't know is going to have a great effect. The other issue that I had was one of the citizens present had requested that we change the ordinance from, as opposed to just doing a 50% reduction of the requirement to bring it all the way down to zero, which, obviously, in the SAT Committee I brought up as well. So like in cities like Eastmark, what they're doing is on some of their smaller streets, they're not actually installing streetlights, right? So they're requiring that the people that live in the houses have lights that face the street that sort of illuminate the street versus them having to incur the cost of streetlights on some of the smaller streets. So there was a few reasons why I oppose this, but I don't know if you guys want to comment on any of that.
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, thank you for your comments. The primary focus of the study is intended to be the arterial streets, and we have some concern at the staff level of having no lighting on arterial streets. You know, when you get into the neighborhoods, you know, on the local streets, I think there is room for more flexibility, depending on land use, and Eastmark is an example. So that's something we intend to discuss as part of the streetlight master plan and look at. But really, the sort of the big focus is, are the streets that carry larger volumes of traffic, which would be our arterial roadways.
Great. Again, my only concern is, I just find it unnecessary to do a study to determine the amount of lumens that exist today on all the streets. If at any point in the future, if we install the GE system that we could dynamically adjust those lumens, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. RJ, I just, going back, I'm going to go back to the sub-areas again. Before we, I guess, address issues or the lighting in the sub-area plans, let's make sure that their lighting needs are met within the sub-areas. For example, and I'll bring up Lehigh, they want less lighting. Desert Uplands wants, you know, more, more lights, right? But regardless, let's be sensitive to our sub-areas and what they have wanted in those communities, because I think it's important to relay that.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, it's not our intent to go into existing neighborhoods and do mass installations of new lights, so yes, we will be sensitive to the existing conditions.
Yeah, some areas have very limited lighting and others do not, so, yeah. Okay, thanks.
It sounds like in order for us to reduce the lumens in the areas that aren't governed by the upland, the desert skies, uplands provision, that we have to change the ordinance so that we can bring down the brightness of those fixtures, is that right?
That's correct, Mayor. Yes.
Yes.
Just in these two, just in these two areas right now, the rest of the city, though the testing will be in these two areas, and then make a determination of how we implement this citywide. But just, this change in ordinance is just for the Desert Uplands and then our downtown electric service area.
It's also my impression that, I think we'd all love to get to a all-LED program at some point, and there's a high initial investment to do that, but then there's cost savings once the LED fixtures or bulbs are in place, right? But the initial cost to make that transformation from a non-LED to an entirely LED community is pretty significant in terms of cost.
Mayor, it is, and, you know, as you're aware, the largest part of the city is actually served by SRP, you know, and not the city of Mesa. And looking at the finances is important. We have some concern over the rate of return on investment with the current rate structure, and we're actually hoping to work with other cities in the valley on engaging SRP and seeing if the actual rate structure can be evaluated to help on that return on investment.
So until SRP adjusts its rates, even if we make the initial investment in switching to LED, the cost difference would be not significant?
Our initial analysis, based on the current SRP rate structure, shows a return on investment of about 11 years, and we anticipate the average lifespan of the individual fixtures at about 20 years. So that just gives you a sense, you know, of what we're looking at. So the city of Phoenix has actually started some conversation, and I've offered on behalf of the city of Mesa to be part of those conversations with SRP, to see if there's something that can be done to bring that return, the time period, the return on investment, to a shorter period.
Okay. So if those negotiations go well, then that might escalate our interest in switching to LED sooner than later. Let's go to Mr. Thompson, then to Mr. Whitaker.
Well, I think there's other avenues than the city funding all the money as well. I mean, there's, you know, there's performance contracts that can be put in place that are based off of not only your maintenance savings, but as well as your energy savings. And there's companies across the US and around the world that actually do that. So it's not like the city would have to front, you know, $15 million or whatever it costs to replace LEDs. We can simply just go out to an RFP and select a company that'll come in, pay for it all on their dime, and then we have a contract in place where, you know, if we, if it's a performance contract, we pay them back through the energy savings or through the maintenance savings and, or something of that nature. But there's other avenues other than the city just funding all the money, so...
That ROI number, I'm assuming, includes the fact that LED bulbs only have to replace like every 20 years versus the HPS, which is significantly lower, right?
Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, that's correct.
Okay, great. So the other thing that I just want to point out, going back to using Los Angeles as the example, like I was trying to figure out, like, how are the other municipalities funding this? And what they're doing in Los Angeles is leasing out to the companies like Verizon, AT&amp;T, to do microcell towers to cover their costs, something that affected like $1,200 per light post is how much they're actually making. So their ROI, whether it's, I don't even know if it's longer than a year, to be honest with you, but I'm assuming it's significantly less. But I want to point out that we can't do that in Arizona, because our state legislature has caps put in place where in Arizona, and correct me at any point if I'm wrong, that we can only charge $50 or $100 per light post. So, you know, if we could lobby our state legislature to help us, that would actually cover our costs to, I'm assuming, fund the entire system. You guys know better than I do.
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, you're correct. There was a legislation that was signed by the governor at the end of March that does cap the city's ability to charge more than $50 or $100 per pole, essentially, per installation. So that is a limitation on the revenue that can come back from working with the private utilities.
Mr. Beller, is that part of the new small cell legislation that was just passed to facilitate 5G? So I think there's two sides to this story, because if, with the higher caps on it, the cell carriers were saying, we're not going to bring 5K to the area because we can't afford to pay $1,500 per pole. Am I on the right track here, Mr. Beller?
Mayor, that's correct. Part of our discussions with the telecom industry dealt with the give and take on 5G deployment, and the initial bill that was introduced was not city-friendly, not only on the fee structure, but on the ride-of-way control side of things. And Mesa was very involved, our city attorney's office and others, very involved in helping craft a bill that ultimately all cities ended up being able to support. There was some heartburn, as with every compromise, on some of the things we didn't get. What we did get was ride-of-way control. What unfortunately we didn't get was the ability to charge whatever we want to charge for the rental, on the street poles. And some cities have been able to do programs, like LA, where they've, where they've been able to do that. The give and take, the telecom industry claims is that they don't do as robust of a 5G rollout in certain parts of those cities or the entirety of those cities based on the economics of it. So, you know, of course, you can imagine that's the story that they would tell, but I think it's 5G's new technology and that deployment starting to occur now, the fact that Arizona's well-positioned to take, to take a good place with that. I know the mayors spoke to this at some events and others, and so, yes, that was a long answer to a very short response, that this was one of the compromises that was made as part of the 5G deployment.
Yeah. So unfortunately, the $50 cap is something that is, in some ways, good for technology to advance, and in other ways, like makes it less lucrative for cities to be involved in supporting new technology.
I'm sure Verizon would still bring 5G technology to the city of, the municipal area, or the metro area of Phoenix if we charged more than $50 per light post. Not to Scott's, nothing against you, but I have a hard time believing that argument personally.
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I know, we've had that discussion for the last, you know, four, five months at the state Capitol on this, and it is an interesting discussion that's happening nationally on this issue, and hopefully, they will benefit from a robust 5G deployment now with the current scheme.
Can't wait.
Yeah.
Well, I think we kind of all want the same thing here. I think we want to make it LED at some point, as soon as it is, the math works for us to pull the trigger on that. So let's keep talking about this and see how the vote is. We might even, what would happen if we continued this on Monday and decided we wanted to continue to develop some sort of consensus on council for a smart plan going forward?
If I could just point out one other thing, like, I don't oppose the ordinance. I'm 100% on board with the LED transition. I just don't, it's the $200,000 study piece of it that I don't feel is necessary, because the technology will allow us to essentially dynamically adjust the brightness of the lights in the future. So to do a study to determine the current lumens just doesn't make sense to me. So that's the only part of it I disagree with, just the ordinance, I think, is absolutely necessary.
I get that, but for cost reasons, is it realistically 10 years away that we're going to do that? And so in the meantime, we have to figure out how to adjust lights, you know, lumens between now and when we can actually pull the trigger. I don't know the answer to that question. Do you?
Mayor, you know, there's nothing magic about the start date, you know, it's just that the technology's out there. At some point, high-pressure sodium lights likely will not be available, you know, it's kind of going the way of the incandescent light bulb, you know? So, you know, we, it's something we, I believe, do need to work on. We're happy to, you know, step back if that's the council's desire and revisit our planned approach, but it is something that I think we will need to begin at some point.
Well, I think you understand the question, is do we... Well, I think you understand the question, is do we need to spend the $200,000 to study something when we think we already know the answer before we study it, or not?
We're not sure we know the answer. And I think part of this is to be able to respond to the neighborhoods and the community that are asking us to adjust, and trying to figure out what is appropriate in certain areas. And we don't, and not only apply that in these particular instances, but across the whole city and what that looks like. And we don't have that expertise in-house to do it. And so I think with the changing technology, we're just looking for some additional third-party assistance to help us, someone who is in this area of expertise. So that's kind of what we're looking at. And really, the council's just being asked to do the ordinance on the pilot study, so we can do, go change from the standard that's in the code. The allocation of the dollars is separate from what's on the council agenda. That's really a budgetary consideration that we use as professional services agreement.
Okay, so we can vote on the ordinance and continue to debate the question of going forward with the study?
Yes.
Okay.
If we don't do the consulting study, we'll just still be kind of waiting to, you know, we're not moving forward with any plans then as far as making what the LED implementation will look like as we go forward.
Great. Well, why don't we keep talking that way? Maybe Mr. Whitaker will be persuaded that that's a good idea.
I have no objection to the ordinance change.
Okay. Well, in that case, should we put it back on consent? Or should we put it on consent? And then we'll continue to answer the question that Mr. Whitaker raises, which is, is this worth the study or not? Is there consensus to do that?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I think we just saved ourselves some time on Monday, then.
Thank you, Mayor.
Put this back on consent. All right. Any other questions regarding our agenda for Monday?
Mayor, I do have just one thing. I wanted to give the council a heads up. So we may add an item to the agenda for Monday. We have a Sustainability and Transportation Committee meeting after this, where we have an applicant requesting water service that's outside of the county. So depending on the rec-- outside of the city, the complex is in the county. And depending on the outcome, the recommendation, if it is for approval, we'll be adding that to the agenda for Monday. So just a heads up if you see that tonight, but we have the committee meeting first.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. If there's no other questions regarding Monday's agenda, the next item on the agenda for this meeting is item two, to hear a presentation and discuss the five-year capital improvement program with a focus on utilities. Beth and Scott, good to see you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Scott Butler from the Office of Management and Budget. Beth Hune, our city engineer, continuing part two of our discussion of the CIP overview. In addition, just a reminder, in addition to our presentations from last week and today, we do have the two attachments that summarize both the capital investment, as well as the operations and maintenance summary from a project detail perspective. Last week, we reviewed the general governmental portion of the CIP, so this week, our focus is on the utilities side. And you'll see from these pie charts for next year, and the five-year in total represents a significant investment in terms of our utility infrastructure, in order to ensure reliable service delivery to our utility customers. In terms of the dollars themselves, again, illustrating the use of voter-approved utility revenue bonds in order to complete that utility infrastructure, those utility infrastructure needs, those bonds are, the debt service for those bonds is repaid through revenues collected for those utility services. And then as far as, from a category perspective, again, a significant portion of the utilities makes up the overall CIP. Those improvements include addressing customer demand needs through growth, service reliability to ensure that we replace aging infrastructure timely, so that there's no service disruptions, and then also some contractual obligations with some of our regional partnerships. And Beth is gonna now give you some project-specific details as far as the projects within the CIP.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As Scott mentioned, we're here to talk mostly about the utility funds, revenue bonds. Today, water, wastewater, electric, and gas. When we go back and we look at the voter-approved bonds from November of '14, this was the allocation of the funding based on different categories of projects that we have within the program. Mesa's a very interesting community in that we have some parts of the city on the west side that are more mature, and we've got infrastructure over 50 years old that is starting to need some attention. And then we go to the south and southeastern part of the community, where we have a lot of undeveloped land that's developing pretty rapidly, and we have new improvements that need to go in to serve them as well. So we do categorize them, look at the system, and then we also consider system reliability and system reinforcement as part of what we're doing. We start with the Water Resources Bonds, that's water and wastewater. In the bonds programs for these two types of utilities, you'll see under customer demand in southeast Mesa, it's probably the largest portion of our water bonds, and it has to do with the fact that we're building treatment plants to serve that area. When we look at the water bonds, there's five major products, projects that represent over 60% of the total bonds in the package. On the south and east side of town is the Signal Butte Water Plant, it's a new water plant. Treatment plants are very unique. You can put a subdivision in and put in portions of the roads and still get people in and out to their homes, but you actually have to have water online and available to deliver before you start construction in a subdivision, or any type of industrial development. We need to be able to have water at the door, ready to go, and wastewater ready to go away when people start to occupy. So we need to build those in advance. They're also unique, because they're not something you can go get piped from, just from a factory and do something with it. You actually have to design the equipment to treat the fluid that you're getting, the water quality and the water capacity that you're getting. So these projects generally take four to five years, from concept to dirt. So it takes a while to develop them, so we start far in advance with what we do normal projects. These five projects represent the treatment plant expansion and pipelines in and out of the plant for that treatment plant. So there's a raw water line coming in from the Central Arizona Project Canal, and there's pipelines going out to get water out to the distribution system. On the west side of town, we have an agreement for the Val Vista Water Plant, where we are separating some of our flows out to deliver them to the existing parts of the city. That project's done, there were 78-inch and down pipelines that went in through the western part of our city. Those five projects take up much of the bonds programs. A few pictures from those projects. This is just a slide to show all of the water projects in totality, including those that we've completed. In addition, part of the bond money goes to the Val Vista Water Plant that we share with Phoenix in the west part of our city. We have a contract there. And then we also fund water right settlements to keep our assured water supply intact. On the wastewater side, again, if you look at customer demand in southeast Mesa, it's where our largest dollar funding, and that is because we share one major wastewater treatment plant with the town of Gilbert and the town of Queen Creek in the southeast part of our city. We are in the process of expanding that. We'll be adding 10 million gallons of capacity for Mesa and four for Gilbert, and we're also upgrading and doing some normal types of things you need to do at treatment plants, replacing equipment that needs to be replaced and those sorts of things. So Queen Creek is participating with us for that, not for capacity. This is a project that we need online by the third quarter of 2020 because of the growth we're seeing in the city. So we are in the middle of the design process right now. I think we're at about 60% complete. It does take up almost 74% of the bond program.
Excuse me, Beth, Mr. Thompson has a question.
Beth, I have a question on, so Gilbert, Queen Creek, and Mesa are all partnering on the Greenfield Water Plant. But you mentioned Queen Creek's participating, but not for capacity?
Yes. Queen Creek doesn't fill any capacity at this point in time. They do need to participate, because we are doing some modifications to the existing plant in terms of upgrading equipment and some things that are just timed to be replaced and things of that sort that we're doing. In addition, I think I mentioned last week, we've had some changes in terms of organic loadings, because we're seeing less flow and higher concentrations, and so they'll be participating in some of that. But in terms of liquid capacity, they're not gaining any capacity with this expansion.
So as they, as Queen Creek starts to continue to grow and develop, their capacity obviously will increase, so what happens then?
They feel that they've got adequate capacity for that, I believe. Our Water Resources folks will be up here shortly, and they might be able to address it more than I can. They handle those negotiations. They feel they've got the capacity today. There are provisions in the agreement, as I understand them, to address it if they go over their capacity at the treatment plants. So we have contractual agreements that do address that. Last week, I think you also asked about the splits, so the next slide gives the allocation percentages, the way they set today on the left. And after we complete the expansion, you can see our capacity allocation is going up to serve the southeast part of our city. Just an overview of the city and the wastewater projects that we have active. We also have a treatment plant that we are part of, the Subregional Operating Group, on the west side of the valley, the 91st Avenue Plant, and there are bond funds in this program to pay for our contractual commitments at that treatment plant for wastewater. Energy, again, it's a very unique type of bond program that we run. Electric, we have 27 million. Gas, 59.1. If we look at how that splits on the electric side, a lot of system reinforcement, life cycle reinforcement. Our electric service area is about five and a half square miles in the heart of the west side of our city, in the downtown. Can see it in the red outline here on the map. I think it's Alma School on the west, Stapley on the east, Brown on the north, and 10th Avenue on the south. This is the way the projects kind of distribute within the service area in this program. Gas, gas is very different as well. We actually have part of our service area in Mesa, we have 90 square miles of a service area in Mesa. We actually have 236 square miles in Pinell County that we refer to as the Magma District. So this is the way the money splits for the projects that we have for gas. Our gas projects in the Mesa service area, you can see in red where the outline where the Mesa service area is that we serve today. We do have more customers in this service area. Looking down at Pinell County and the gas projects and the Magma service area, you can see the red outline of what our service area is in the Magma service area as well. And I got a little excited there with my fingers. But slipping back a slide, the electric and gas projects are also very different. They're driven by other factors. One of the things we do to save funding is we joint trench our gas and water. So in other words, we put the water in the bottom of the trench and the gas on top. It saves on trenching costs for our two utilities. So when we go into a neighborhood and we replace water lines due to aging infrastructure, we generally replace the gas lines at the same time. So they follow a lot of our water projects. In addition, they're under streets, so if we're gonna go in and rip up a street and redo it, we're gonna go in and look at the age of our utilities, the condition of our utilities, the leaks that we may have in the area, and then we may also choose to do that. We are undergrounding electric in parts of our city, so when we do street projects, we look at those in terms of whether we need to underground overhead electric lines.
Mr. Luna.
Beth, do we also lay fiber as well when we're doing these kind of projects?
It depends, I guess, is the answer to that question. We put in fiber that connects, we put in a bank of two-inch, four, two-inch ducts that go in with our streetlight system, because we run fiber to all of our streetlight, all of our traffic signals and our control cabinets. So we put those in, and when we do that, there's a couple of those ducts are spare. Then in other conditions, like down on Southern Avenue, we knew we had a large Santander going into the building there along Southern Avenue. We didn't know at the time, because Southern Avenue is very rich in dark fiber and conduit. We have multiple vendors down there, private companies. We didn't know whether they were gonna get their service from the utilities that were on the north or the south, so we put in conduits to facilitate that in the future, so they could lease those conduits from us if they wanted to get service on the south side of the road, as opposed to the north side of the road.
Mayor, Council, there is a project that is being worked on by ITD and Communications, where strategically, we are looking at future projects, because we have already installed quite a bit of either conduit or fiber across the city. Matter of fact, we have, and we talked about this thing last week, in our public safety bonds, we actually have been putting fiber in to connect some of our public safety facilities. But we are also looking at the possibility of creating infrastructure, we used to call it east streets, where we would, as we do projects and around certain areas of the city, we would put in conduit in anticipation of private sector needs or public sector needs. And we're looking at that again now specifically in the downtown area to see if the city, through its infrastructure, could go ahead and begin putting in at least the conduit, maybe fiber, to provide services to not just the city needs in the downtown area, but also maybe private sector. So we are looking at that.
I know that many cities have implemented the dig-wants policy. It would make sense to me that we would lay dark fiber as we're digging these trenches, so that we don't have to go back and re-dig again.
Yes, sir. We also have a couple of private-public partnerships with some of our dark fiber vendors. Zayo's one. They're leasing some of our conduits that we put in several, like about 15 years ago in the southeast part of the city, and then as part of that lease agreement, where we have gaps in the system, they're completing those gaps for us, too. Customer demand is the other item that drives electric and gas projects, new service connections, providing service to new companies. And that pretty much covers our utility bond program. I just put the active map link up as well, just again, to remind people that it's out there. It is on mesaaz.gov under maps, and you can go out and see what projects are active in the city today.
Thank you very much. Questions? Mr. Freeman.
Beth, you mentioned, thanks for the presentation. Something cued me up, you said something about fund water right settlements.
Yes.
Can you explain that?
Well, I can probably refer that to Water Resources later, but there are several longstanding negotiations for water rights with the Native American communities. And when we talk about water right settlements, that's generally what those are, but they can give you more specifics on the ones that are still being negotiated.
Fair enough.
Maybe we can address that. They'll be coming up here in just a minute, so we'll have them address it.
Because I have a follow-up question on that.
Yeah, there were negotiations for some Indian community water rights that were done by the region, and I think we're getting close to making the payment on that, but we can talk about that.
Okay. Okay, other questions? Thank you very much. Great presentation. The next item on our agenda is item 2B, hear a presentation and provide direction on the department budgets and utility rate recommendations for environmental management and sustainability, energy resources, and water resources. Welcome.
Thank you. Morning, Mayor and Council. While I get set up here, my name is Brian Richel. I am a deputy director in the Office of Management and Budget, and I will be kind of moderating and doing this presentation. I will also have the other departments come up individually, since they have the individual presentations. So as before, we've presented the enterprise fund in February. And as we look, and we went to the Audit and Finance Committee just before, also in March, the city takes a look at the enterprise operations as a whole. Even though each utility is operated as a separate business center, we still want to take a look at the enterprise as a whole. With that, the combined, we look at the combined ending reserve fund balance. We want to adhere to the city financial policy of about 8% to 10%, at least 8% to 10% over the eight-year forecast that we look at. So we want to hopefully keep above that, but within the eight-year forecast, we want to make sure we're above the 8% to 10%. This helps, the reserve balance helps smooth rate adjustments year over year, so we're not having or needing rate spikes in one year or another. This helps smooth it out over the years. And then it also helps phase in new programs, if we have any new programs or any changes in the operations. So looking at the enterprise as a whole, and then also in the individual operating utilities, the revenue targets that we are proposing for '17, '18 is about $9.4 million individually here, but this will help smooth out the reserve fund balance and keep us above the, above our at least 8% to 10%. And at the end, I'll summarize everything and show you how the financials will look once the departments give their individual... and show you how the financials will look once the departments give their individual presentations. With any rate adjustment implementation, we do, there are methods of implementation. Adjust that very year to year based on the needs of the individual utilities. And with those adjustments, it does impact the individual customers. But it varies depending on the method of implementation and the customer service. So the good news, looking at the revenue targets and the proposed rates that were presented to the Audit and Finance, the proposed rates over on the right for 1718 are less than what we projected last year for 1718. The, my notes here, that was due possible, as the departments will come up and explain on some of their budgets, reviewing their budgets. But also, a big part of that was the defeasance and the refunding of the utility bonds. Just this year, there was about a $12 million savings in debt service, which helped take a look at these rates. And with that, if there are no any questions, I will start having the individual departments come up and present their presentations, their budget and rate recommendations. And then I will circle back and sum it all up.
I have kind of an overview question. So because we were able to refinance some of these bonds, the need for rate increases was mitigated. And so is that what drives the rate? In order to make the payments, the contractually obligated payments on those utility bonds, we need to make these rate increases or we're not going to have the capacity to pay those bondholders?
So Mayor, that's, obviously, that's one of the components, certainly debt service. And the, as you just saw, the, all the major projects, especially in the water and wastewater that are coming online, those are large projects are, obviously, the payment of, paying back the bonds on those projects are built into the forecast. And so we see a growth in the debt service amount. There's growth in the cost of water commodity. And so there's a variety of things. But certainly, the ability to save from the refinancing of bonds, and most of those bonds would be bonds that were issued years ago, how old they were, but they were previous bonds. So we're refinancing older debt. But obviously, that's built into the debt schedule. So based on where we were looking at this a year ago, not knowing what, how much the refinancing savings would be, yes, this is one of the factors that's allowed us to be able to modify the rates lower than we were talking about last year. Also, you know, we're still seeing growth in the number of accounts, which is good. Even though the accounts, the water usage per account is down, we're seeing growth there. So, and you're seeing also, we're really trying to manage our operating side of the formula, of the ledger, to make sure we keep that in line. So it's a combination of things, but certainly the refinancing of debt certainly helps on the upward pressure of rate increases.
Thank you.
And now bring up solid waste, or environmental management and sustainability.
Good morning, Mayor Council. Scott Boucham, the Director of Environmental Management and Sustainability. I have Sherry Collins, who's our senior fiscal analyst, with us here today. And here just to hopefully quickly present to you our, some of our successes and our budget and our rate recommendations. So we'll start, we have our department vision. And one of the ways that we try and measure whether or not we're meeting that vision is through some of our performance metrics that we have. The first performance metric that I'd like to show to you is energy conservation. So this is kilowatt hours saved through projects that we've done with other departments, engineering, water, transportation facilities over the years. And in calendar year 2016, we had about $369,000 worth of savings, which actually equates to over 4.6 million kilowatt hours that we saved over calendar year 2016. Another one of our performance measures then that goes along with this is renewable energy. So these are solar installations, city-installed solar installations on our city facilities. And over, in calendar year 2016, we produced over 2 million kilowatt hours from these solar projects, which saved the city approximately $48,000. The neat part about these projects is the majority of them were done through what is called a solar services agreement, where the city just pays for the energy that is produced from the solar installations. And we don't actually have any upfront costs that are associated with the solar installation. So the solar provider designs, builds, owns, and operates the structure, and we just pay for the energy that's produced from it. Some of the other projects that we've done were grant-funded projects also. So all of these projects didn't have any city out-of-pocket costs associated with them. So now that's kind of the environmental and sustainability side. Over to the solid waste division of the department. In, on July 1 of 2016, apartment communities within the valley or within the state were open to commercial competition. So if you're an apartment community with five or more apartments, you could choose who your waste provider was. So the City of Mesa and Environmental Management and Sustainability, we worked hard to retain those customers. And I'm happy to report, as of March of this year, we had retained 89% of the customers from those apartment communities. And really, it's been a very successful, a lot of hard work from the folks within the department to maintain that. And it's just not work since July of 2016, I'd say. It's work that's been done previous because we had a lot of these apartment communities, as the private haulers would come in, that they said they were happy with the service that the City of Mesa provides. They were happy with the pricing that we had. And so they kept us.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this a result of state legislation, which relaxed the rules and allowed more competition between solid waste providers?
Mayor Councilmember Luna, or Vice Mayor Luna, I'm sorry, that is exactly correct. It was a Senate bill that was passed that opened up those communities to commercial competition. So, but we've been very successful in maintaining those customers. So it really, I think, is a great reflection of the service that we provide. Another one with measuring successes, it might not look as much successful, but I wanted to show it to you, is our recycling rates. As you can see, we hover right around 30% with our recycling rates. And that has been historical over the years. The Blue Barrel, and this is a national trend also, the Blue Barrel really isn't moving the needle very much anymore. It did when it first was implemented, but it's kind of stagnated with that. We do have some pressures that are associated with recycling, with contamination rates. And also, there's what's called lighting of materials. So a water bottle weighs less now than what it used to 10 years ago. So when you start looking at tonnage, as we calculate that diversion rate, it has an effect on our diversion rate. So hope to move that into the future, but just wanted to show that it is there. One of the previous directors, I will say, used to say that you could tell the economy by solid waste service. And one of the things I wanted to point out through recycling, you can also see that. And what we're seeing with the new Amazon economy, so to speak, is the price of cardboard. And we have seen some pretty dramatic increases in the value of the price of cardboard. And we're seeing prices now that are back to like 2007, 2008 levels. So it's a good sign when we're seeing, we've seen steady increases over the last several years of the price of cardboard. And from a lot of the stuff I've read within the waste industry, it really is a pretty good indicator of the economy. So I think that's good news with the price of cardboard. Plus, it generates more revenue for us when we are collecting that cardboard. Some of the accomplishments that we had, we did finish with the help of our friends in energy resources and engineering, the completion of a permanent CNG facility. This facility, the importance of this facility is that it will allow us to convert our entire fleet and be able to infuel our entire solid waste fleet with CNG. Previously, we had a temporary station, and the number of trucks that we had, we were kind of maxed out on the capacity with that temporary station. And so this permanent station now allows us to continue with our transition from diesel fuel to CNG. And this will allow us to fuel our fleet going out into the future and not have any issues with capacity of that. Another one of the accomplishments, we are at the 60% design phase of our household hazardous waste facility. If anybody was in the area of Center in McKillips on Saturday, you will know that there is definitely a high demand from the residents of the City of Mesa for the service, as we had our household hazardous waste event at the same location where this facility will be built. And we broke all-time records associated with the number of residents that went to that event on Saturday. We had 1,159 cars that went through in a four-hour period. Actually, extended a little bit past four hours because there were some weights associated with it. But we collected over 16,000 gallons of hazardous waste at that time, too. So we were letting folks know, as they were sitting in line, that that full-time facility is coming. And they were excited about that because there's obviously demand for this service within the city.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Freeman.
Two questions then. Thank you for the HHW. I like that. But compressed natural gas, is there any use in the private sector to provide natural gas for them? The private sector, is that being used much anymore? Or we could sell fleet vehicles and provide... I know we used to do that in the past. We had, back in the day when natural gas was part of the conversion for private vehicles as well as fleet vehicles. We don't have that capability of providing service.
Not at this station. We did, as we were going through the design process, look at whether or not it made sense, because we were working with our engineer, our energy resources folks. So Frank might be able to answer it a little bit better. But we just didn't see that there was going to be a demand at the Sixth Street location for that fueling.
Correct. Yes, I know. I'm just, I just know that some people have a difficult time in the private sector finding a place to fill up for natural gas. And it'd be nice to have just a fueling station for them. And I mean, we have gas anyway, so.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, the challenge is there are fairly capital-intensive investment. And in order to make that investment worthwhile, you have to have a number of customers consuming enough gallons in order to create the savings, to create the revenues, to offset that capital investment. And we're not in the business of taking too much risk in terms of building a station and hoping it will come. We need to build a station with a pretty firm commitment from a fairly large user or groups of users in order to be able to assure that that stream of revenues is going to be there for us to pay the debt service on the construction of that station if we use debt, which, in this instance, given the life of the station, I would recommend that we would use debt service for that kind of a financial investment.
I know in the past, we provided that service. That was many years ago. But I just didn't know whether the private sector, I mean industrial buses, other fleet services, I know, we had that in the past. But that was off of Sixth Street and like, maybe Hibbert area or over just on the south side of City Plant Downtown.
We have done quite a bit of work with large fleets. We've reached out to the school district, we've reached out to Crescent Crown. Other types of fleets have put a lot of miles on it. You have to have a vehicle with a lot of miles in order to justify, one, investing in the vehicle, which is typically quite a bit more expensive than your standard nat, excuse me, diesel or gasoline vehicle. And then you have to have the miles to generate the fuel savings in order for the customer to justify their investment. And with the price of gasoline today and the price of diesel, we just haven't found that market yet. I think we've been close a couple of times. We've beat the pavement pretty hard trying to find enough gallons in order to justify the investment, and we just haven't found it yet.
I just think another enterprise fund. Okay, thank you, Frank.
I have one question on that. What is the capital cost consist of if we already have the station that exists for our own fleet? Like, what additionally do we have to purchase on the capital side that's going to be so expensive?
Well, in this instance, I, in the way we've looked at the existing station, it's really not got the ingress and egress to be able to serve other large fleets. So for instance, one of the potential markets we looked at was school buses. And some of the turning radiuses and when buses are going to be getting in and out of the parking area, and when existing vehicles are going in and out of the area would be a conflict. And so to be able to use the existing facilities for that type of service, it's problematic. We're not sure that we could use those existing facilities. We would like to find a location. We've established some relationships with EBIT where they have some spare property, where that would be an ideal location. We've looked at partnering with them, with creating a training program for CNG station technicians, et cetera, so that it's, you know, it's still a very much an infant industry. And there's not that many technicians that are trained well enough to take on the responsibilities. So this would be a very much a private-public partnership between us, EBIT, and any like Crescent Crown to make those investments and to expand the industry, establish the market and the industry.
Thanks.
And I think one of the things you also see is a lot of these larger fleets will fuel at night. Like, that's what we do. Most of our vehicles, when they come in, they're close to empty. But then we have somebody, we have both time fill and fast fill stations that we're filling those vehicles up during the nighttime. And so a lot of those large fleets are doing that. And they would, that would be coincidental to when we're using our own station also. So, and they'd have to bring those vehicles to that location. So that can be problematic for them.
Thank you. Going, I've got a household waste question then. You know, I drove by the household waste day, and I thought there was a motor vehicle accident at Center Street in McKellips. But finding out the traffic had backed all the way down McKellips, westbound traffic. So it's very successful. And explain to me the costs involved for that. I mean, people can dump it off free, whatever they have. We get some of the recyclable materials. And I guess as utility customers, we're charged a HHW fee in our utility bills to cover that cost. And then I have another question.
Okay. So just as far as the funding associated with it, we can start there. The City of Mesa actually has what's called a clean and green fee. And that is 84 cents per residential customer. That pays both for the Clean Sweep, Green Sweep program, where you can have roll-offs brought into your neighborhood once a year and do neighborhood cleanups. And that's 43 cents of the 84 cents that you pay per month. And then the other 41 cents pays for the household hazardous waste event. And that generates somewhere around $600,000 a year. The majority of the costs that we see associated with the household hazardous waste events are staffing and disposal. So if you can imagine to bring 1,200 cars through in a four to five-hour period and collect 16,000 gallons of waste in a safe manner, takes a significant amount of staff, both directing traffic, unloading appliances, electronics, unloading the hazardous materials, the paint, segregating it. So there's a lot of staffing costs that is associated with running those events. And then our other large bill associated with it is the actual disposal cost that we have.
Yeah, kudos to you. I mean, that's a phenomenal activity, and it's very well represented by the community. I was just wondering, have we ever considered any pass-through costs? Everybody that lines up and wants to dump off their material, could we possibly charge them or say a flat fee? Is that something we'd considered in the past? And I'm just saying that just to cover some of our overall operating costs. Staffing is one of the big ones. And I think everybody lined up there would happily pay something just to get rid of something.
The fee that we have does cover the full cost of the program. So, and we provide that to all. So it's only residential customers that are charged that because we can only take household hazardous waste. We can't take business waste because that's regulated separately from residential waste. So there's a lot more regulations that would be associated if we wanted to try and take commercial waste. But the revenue that is generated from the fee does cover all of the costs associated with the program.
Do we ID people who come? Do we know that they're residents of Mesa or not? Or do we share that with other communities?
We try not to share it with other communities. We have checked utility bills in the past. To be honest with you, we stopped checking about a year ago because the line is getting so long. The demand is so high with people coming through that we were holding them up. There was a point, we had an event at the East Mesa Service Center, and the traffic was packed up, backed up past University on Power Road. Power Road's a major arterial, police, transportation. I don't think anybody's a big fan when we start having mile-long lines backed up on Power Road. So one of the things that we've done is we ask people if they're Mesa residents, but we're not making them actually show us anything to try and get them through the line.
But Scott, with the facility and the staff out there, it would be a lot easier to do that.
Yes. Once we have a facility, we are hoping that we won't have, you know, 1,200 people that decide to show up between the hours of 8:00 and 12:00 on Saturday because there'll be other hours that they can come to this facility. And we'll be able to take more time in regards to actually checking for, to make sure that they are Mesa resident. We'll also be able to have less staff because you won't need 100 people in a four-hour period. You can spread that out over the year with just a couple of staff members. It'll also give us an opportunity to better bulk and package the materials, creating efficiencies for us. Because truly, when you're collecting this much waste in that short period of time, people are moving... people are moving as quick as they can, and it's going into boxes, and it's, there's more efficient packaging that could happen if we had more time. But because it's at service centers that then need to be operational on Monday morning, we have to get everything out of there on Saturday afternoon, or sometimes into Saturday evening when we have events like we did on Saturday.
It's a long day.
Yeah, it is very much a long day also for the staff members. They're putting in twelve, thirteen-hour days on those days.
Tell them thanks. Appreciate it.
I appreciate that, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Whitaker.
You were talking about the solar installations from the electric side. I didn't quite understand what you were saying. So do they charge us the wholesale rate that we would pay otherwise, but then, like how does that process work?
All, all of our current solar installations are actually in the SRP territory. Frank, I believe, is going to be talking to you a little bit about a proposed project in the electric service area that we're working on. So what we do, we have partnered on the solar services agreements. All of them have been in partnership with SolarCity. So SolarCity designs, owns, and operates, maintains the systems, and we pay a fixed price per kilowatt hour for a twenty-year period. So we signed a twenty-year contract with them. The price per kilowatt hour is anywhere between six and a half to eight cents a kilowatt hour is what we're paying SolarCity. And that's a fixed cost going out for the next twenty years. So all of the projects that we've done in the SRP territory, that, that price per kilowatt hour is less than what we call the blended rate that we're paying SRP. So if we're paying seven cents per kilowatt hour per se, we might be, our blended rate is at seven and a half or eight cents from SRP. So we're getting savings from those projects from day one. As you can see, because it's forty-six thousand dollars worth of savings, we're only saving that delta between what our retail price would be and what we're paying SolarCity. And those are, I'll be honest, those are also very dependent upon SRP and their rate structures and how they put those together because they can affect our savings through their rate structures.
And the risk, the twenty-year lease, is that the only downside risk is the fact that prices could get cheaper so we would be stuck in a contract with SRP, or is there zero risk at all?
The risk that would come with it is if, in fact, that the price per kilowatt hour drops down below what we were paying. But all of those had savings from day one, and it's a fixed rate. So that kilowatt hour price that will not go up over the next twenty years. So we felt that that risk was relatively low to say that the price of energy is going to go down over the next twenty years to a level that is going to be lesser than what we were paying from day one, if that makes sense.
That's great, yeah. So are we pushing for doing more of these installations, then? Is that like on our priority list?
We, we would love to do more. One of the, one of the things is, is we've, you know, a lot of the locations that it makes sense financially for us to do, we've done. So we are in conversations with Water Resources about the possibility of doing one at the Brown Road Water Treatment Plant. But there is also some issues with the legislature in regards to the possibility of taxing the value of these solar systems. And depending on the court case, so they are actually in court with SolarCity currently, and depending on the outcome of that, that case will affect the financials. So once we know the outcome of the case and whether or not there is a property tax associated with those, we'll be able to come back and say whether or not we have the savings from day one. Because that's, that's kind of been the, the goal that I have been giving in order to do these types of projects, is that we have to at least be revenue-neutral from day one or be able to save money from day one. So that's, that's the bar that I have, and that's what we're trying to do. And we, we constantly look at where we might be able to do those types of projects in the SRP territory.
And when you over, so the facility sizes that we can accommodate, if you oversize the solar system and you're actually feeding electricity back into the grid, do we still make those same, is it still cost-effective, or do you have to size the system in the fact that it only consumes one hundred percent of your electricity and not anything above and beyond?
We actually try and size the systems to about seventy-five percent just to avoid that overproduction issue. So we, we try and give ourselves a little bit of a leeway in regards to that because that is exactly the case. Because then if you overproduce, you are, SRP will give us what they call the polyverde rate, which is at two or three cents a kilowatt hour, and we're paying six cents a kilowatt hour. So that affects the financials associated with it. So we try and keep that somewhere between seventy-five and eighty percent of what the overall usage is of the building.
That's awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Scott, I assume you have more to your presentation?
Yes. So now we'll actually get into some of the rate associated with it. So some of the pressures that we're seeing within the utility is growth. Also, this, this kind of drives an increase in personal services and an increase in our tipping fees. Because the more, the more trash and recycling that we're collecting, the more trucks we need, the more people we need, the more tipping fees that we are charged. So those are some of the pressures that we're seeing. Some of the budget reductions, we have been working with...
I'm sorry, Scott. What's a tipping fee?
A tipping fee is what we pay when we go to the landfill or a transfer station. So it's a price per ton for the disposal of solid waste.
Got it.
Yep. So some of the budget decreases, the, the large budget decrease that we have, we've been working with the Performance Excellence Team and Fleet in regards to looking at our vehicle replacement model. And we were actually, through the use of that model, working with, with both of those departments, we were able to reduce our fleet capital expenditures for seventeen, eighteen by approximately a million dollars. So we continue to work with those two groups to make sure that we are purchasing our vehicles at the right time, based on, on the model and financials associated with it. Just a quick slide that shows you the number of customers that we have, both on the residential and the commercial side. And then we'll get to our utility rate recommendations. So we are recommending a three-point-five percent increase on all of the residential rates, which would take the residential ninety-gallon barrel rate would go up ninety-seven cents from twenty-seven seventy-nine to twenty-eight seventy-six. And you can see the, the rest of the increases that would be associated with that, both sixty-gallon, additional black barrel, or a green barrel. We are not asking for an increase in the Mesa Green and Clean Fee. And so when you look, the average residential customer, that increase of ninety-seven cents, when you include the fee, their bill will go from twenty-eight sixty-three to twenty-nine sixty per month. In addition to that, we're asking for a three-point-five percent increase on our bulk pickup and our appliance pickup programs. And then with our commercial front-load service, it's a two-point-five percent increase. But what we're doing, that's not across-the-board increase, it is to our larger commercial customers where we are actually reducing the discounts that we give for multi-day service and multi-bin service. And so this is just going to affect a certain group of customers who are, are larger customers that we have a, a smaller net income associated with. And then the last one, well, we also have our front-load co-mingle program. It was a pilot program. We're removing the pilot status from it and establishing a rate of twenty-eight dollars per month. And our cardboard program, we are asking for an increase on the cardboard. Also, a small increase on our commercial roll-off green waste fee of four-point-nine percent. This is very, it's a very small part of our business. This is only about two thousand dollars worth of revenue is that we'll generate with that increase.
Scott, our front-load rates, will that still keep us within that competitive range?
We, we continue to look at that. We're very sensitive to that because we are in competition with the, with the private sector, and we, we do believe this will keep us within that range that we're competitive. But we also do push customer service because one of the things that we, the feedback we got from the apartment communities was, you know, in some cases, we are, we do cost a little bit more, but they were very satisfied with the level of service. And so they were willing to pay a little bit more for the service that we provided.
Mr. Luna.
Are we going to see any increases on our landfill uses and costs?
Yes, we do. We're seeing about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in our tipping fees this year. That's in addition to last year, we had about the same level of increase with our tipping fees.
So we're, we're staying consistent, so these adjustments will...
Yeah. Yep, these are to help us out with that. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them, otherwise I think we're...
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
I'm Frank McCray. I'm the Director of the Energy Resources Department. To my left and your right is John Petroff, our Senior Fiscal Analyst. Also in the audience is Marty Hunter, our Deputy Director in Electric, Bill Norton, our Deputy Director in Gas, and Rich Manzo, who is our CAP Administrator. The utility industry is a very capital-intensive industry. It's one of the most capital-intensive industries there is. Probably next-most major capital-intensive is the rail industry. What that means sometimes is that decisions made long ago have a significant impact on the decisions that we make today, what constraints and what opportunities we have today. And while our size sometimes can be used, are viewed as a limit, we don't have the economies of scale. The way we overcome that size is by outsourcing a lot of what we do. We go to the competitive markets, and we beat the cost of some of our larger competitors on an ongoing basis. So despite our small size of our utilities, we do a great job in terms of providing the service and keeping our costs low. Before diving into the presentation in detail, I did want to express our department's appreciation and gratitude for a couple of departments. I don't have time to mention every department here, but we couldn't do what we do and accomplish what we accomplished without the help of a couple of departments, so I just wanted to point a couple of those out. First, engineering. Beth and her team do a great job of engineering and designing our critical infrastructure parts. We work very closely with Beth's teams to make sure that what they design, engineer, and contract to be installed meets our expectations and is easy for us to operate and maintain. Business Services, especially two parts, the purchasing area, they procure a lot of our materials and equipment with us, and then also the customer service desk. These are the folks that take the calls about billing and, and rate complaints, et cetera, and they've done a phenomenal job. And then finally, Water Resources. Not only do we share the same building, but Water Resources reads our meters and delivers that information into the billing system. They perform a lot of our turn-on and turn-offs for our gas and electric customers. Along with the Information Technology Department, they manage our supervisory control and data acquisition. So this is the electronics communication system that allows us to continue monitoring and being aware and informed of what's happening in our gas and electric system. Incredibly important job. And then they also have a desk that takes calls from customers about power interruptions or gas odors and leaks for us to respond to in an emergency manner. And then finally, Human Resources. They help us with training, they help us with personnel matters, and also probably most importantly, the recruiting and hiring of personnel. We've also enjoyed collaborating with the Economic Development Team. We've collaborated with them to develop an economic development rate that was used to retain Mesa cold storage. They were a customer that had an opportunity to move to the other side of the valley, and we worked with Economic Development to develop a rate that allowed us to retain them as a customer, and they've grown significantly since that time that they made the decision to stay in Mesa. We've also worked with Economic Development to come up with a small commercial customer support rate during the construction phase of the central main extension of the light rail. So that was very helpful. And so we've done a lot of collaborating with them, and now we've really enjoyed working with Jeff McVeigh and his Downtown Transformation Team. This year marks the hundredth anniversary of City of Mesa owning and operating a gas-electric utility. Quite a milestone, so we've got about a hundred and twenty-two full-time equivalent employees that provide service to those customers. You can see the statistics there. They're the current forecast for fiscal years sixteen, seventeen. Some recent data will indicate, I think, that where we'll end up for electric is likely to be somewhat higher than that indicated in terms of net sources and uses. Attachment three of the City Council report provides a longer frame, a longer term to look at those results, and so we think we're doing pretty well financially, according to those slides. Going to Slide three and four now. Our priorities, missions, and goals are closely in alignment with the city's strategic goals. For instance, if we can provide reliable and safe energy utility services at reasonable cost, then we think that helps support the city's ability to enhance the sustainable economy of our community. So we, we take that seriously. We align, we purposely align and use those priorities with the city's strategic goals, and we use that to make decisions on capital investment, human resources, just about everything we do is aligned with those priorities. Slide five is a slide that indicates some of the measures that we use that tells us whether we're providing an acceptable or expected level of reliability, safety, and cost. This is the second time in recent years that our electric employees have worked three years without a lost time accident. That's a pretty, pretty amazing record in the electric utility industry. These are not the safest of jobs, not the easiest of jobs performed. In terms of reliability, we rely upon an organization called the Institute of Electronics and Electrical Engineers. They have indices that measure the reliability of service in a standardized way across the industry. We recently received the American Public Powers Association's Certificate of Excellence and Reliability, doing it due to achieving some very high levels of reliability relative to our peers. So in addition to our duration of outages being seventy percent better than the target that we had for two thousand and sixteen, our duration index was twelve percent better than the industry's top quartile. And it was also seventy-four percent better than the average within our region. Our Service Availability Index, which is kind of a percent measure of what percentage of time all of our customers have service, that index was ninety-nine-point-nine-nine-seven, while the top quartile's index was ninety-nine-point-nine-nine-six. So we were better than the top quartile. American Public Power Association also has a program called the Reliable Public Power Provider, and in two thousand and fourteen, we won their Platinum Level Award. And we anticipate an announcement in May that, about what will happen for us in two thousand and seventeen. The RP3 is an indication of our achievement in terms of reliability, safety, workforce development, and how we've improved our system. Another item there is our, our green mix. We utilize an integrated resource planning process that identifies the optimal mix of options to meet our customers' needs. So currently, about twenty percent of our annual energy supplies are coming from green renewable hydro generation, and most of these generation sources are on the Colorado River. We've also supported our customers' pursuit of solar options, and currently, we have thirty-nine of our customers who've installed solar, and they produce, or they've installed about three hundred and ninety-one KW of solar capacity. I'm going to turn it over to John to talk about some of the financial metrics as we go through the rest of the presentation.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As Frank mentioned in the previous slide, we have pretty good reliability on our service, so another thing customers might look at is bill comparisons with their neighboring utilities. So for calendar year two thousand and sixteen, our residential customer, our average residential customers' bills were approximately thirteen percent less than their SRP counterparts. What this slide shows is a bill comparison based on what our proposed rate increase will be. So for the dollar twenty-five per month residential increase, for their low-use customers in the first quartile, we're anticipating our bills being fifteen percent less than SRP. And as you move up to the medium-sized customers, we're anticipating ten to eleven percent less than SRP. And for the larger customers, it'll be about nine percent less than SRP for residential. Moving on to some highlights, this is a program we started in two thousand and fifteen to help low-income customers in, during the summer, reduce their bills. We had lower usage, or lower participation in two thousand and fifteen because we didn't have a lot of time to market and plan the program, so you see the numbers increased for two thousand and sixteen. And with the proposed rate increase, our customers last year saved about forty dollars a month. So during the summer, this summer, with the rate increase, those savings will go up to about forty-three seventy-five, for the whole program, for those three months.
So turning back to some more accomplishments, we discussed on Slide five, the levels of safety, reliability, and affordability. We're also prudently managing our cost and rate adjustments to ensure that we sustain our financial support to the city. Again, you can see that level of support on Attachment three to the Council Report. But just want to point out a couple of things, items on there. Our energy supply cost, both electric and gas, is probably our largest single-cost item within our cost structure. On the electric side, we built a diverse and robust portfolio that provides these supplies and minimizes our cost. In two thousand and sixteen, we replaced one of our largest contracts. It supplied about thirty-nine percent of our... It supplied about 39% of our energy over the course of the year. Working through the competitive markets, the RFP process, timing the RFP to the market at the right time, we've been able to reduce the cost of that contract by almost 20%. Keep in mind that those savings, those types of efforts are passed on to our customers through our electric energy cost adjustment factor mechanism. So if our cost goes up, our rates go up. If our cost goes down, our rates go down. That's a little bit of anomaly in the utility industry. Scott mentioned our collaboration with them on the issuance of an RFP for solar facilities. We're hoping to see council approval sometime in the near future for a contract to install what would be a solar parasol summer to what you might see at ASU. It would be a structure of about 24-foot high. It would shade about 102 parking spaces at the south parking lot at the Mesa Arts Center. It would provide about 40,000 square feet for shaded space for special events. The capacity of it would be about 512 KW, and would produce about 875,000 kilowatt-hours per year. Just to give you a perspective, 875,000 kilowatt-hours per year would be almost 2% of the city's buildings and facilities that are served by the Energy Resources Department in the downtown area. That would also equate to about 30% of the MAC's annual energy supplies. So think about a situation where we'd have 30% of the MAC's energy supplies being met by the solar panel out in the parking lot, and then combine that with our 20% annual energy requirements being met by the green renewable hydro. We've got a very green facility at the MAC, about 50% of its annual energy supplies being met by green renewable with about half of that, 50%, right there on-site. So that would be quite an accomplishment.
I have a question about that. Why are we only shooting for 50%?
In this instance, it's a matter of the size of the parking lot restricts how many panels we can place on there.
That'll be SolarCity, or that'll be a city-owned facility?
In this instance, it will be a facility that we will contract. SolarCity is not in the final list of bidders on that. It may be a purchase-power agreement similar to what we've done with SolarCity on other city buildings, but we're also exploring things like lease-purchase options for us to own the facility by issuing bonds and having to fund that. But there are risks and rewards under each scenario, and we're still going through the final analysis that should be presenting the results to the city manager's office in the near future for a final determination.
And I know there'll be another presentation, so I'll save the rest of my questions, but what's the ROI? Do you have those numbers yet as far as what the capital investment will be, and how long it'll take to pay for yourself?
Scott, do you remember the capital number?
That's fine. I'll wait for the presentation.
I would say that...
It'll be less than 10 years.
Oh, great.
Well, in this instance, the costs are significantly above what the cost of our other sources of supply are, so I wouldn't say we're doing this for an ROI purposes. We're doing this to enhance the greenness of our downtown electric utility, more so than we are any type of long-term ROI.
Yeah. No, I completely agree. The ROI is still a number that we have to consider, but I completely understand the green side of it as well.
Frank, real quick, you're going to be putting the solar panels at the Mesa Arts Center. Is it going to look similar to what we have at our libraries and the Multi-Generation Center? Or is it going to be different?
It would be substantially different. In those installations, as I recall, they're basically a canopy-type structure over just the parking spaces. With the parasol approach, you're building a superstructure, if you will, over the entire parking lot, and then you're placing panels, it's kind of a roof panel, on top of it. So it covers not only the parking space, but the driveways between the parking spaces, et cetera. It also gives us opportunities to put in lighting for events, promotional signs, different kind of LED lighting with colors and dimming, sound systems being rigged, et cetera. So it's more like what you see at ASU on the south and east side of the stadium where they've used it for things like tailgate sessions, et cetera.
And can we have a rendering, maybe?
Yes, we do have a rendering of that in our presentation.
We're going to bring this whole package back to council at some point. We're still in the RFP process.
Couple of exciting commercial customers that we recently began service to. One is Benedictine University's Residence Hall at the Alhambra Hotel, so that was a nice project to work on. Scott mentioned the compressed natural gas station, so in addition to providing natural gas to that station, we provide electricity to the compressors to compress that gas. And then also, the Sunskis facility was converted into, repurposed into a manufacturing facility by a company named K-Sport. And so the electric economic development rate was helpful in convincing K-Sport to select that location. With that, I'll turn it back over to John, and he's going to go through some more financial aspects.
Just a brief overview of our funding sources. We're electric-driven by rate revenues, other fees and charges, and then we also receive upfront payments from developers or customers for infrastructure expansion, and sometimes those developer payments, they're potentially refundable, but it depends on the contracts and whatnot. Moving on to some budget changes, we propose some budget changes to minimize our costs to our customers, so this just highlights a couple of the bigger items in the electric So going on further to our rate recommendations for electric, we're recommending an increase to the system service charge for just our residential customers of $1.25 per month to offset future expenditure increases. And we're doing this, as mentioned before, to smooth out rate increases to avoid large rate spikes in the future. And it's also helpful to raise revenue on the system service charge because that's a fixed revenue, so it's not, it moderates the impacts of reductions in consumption on the consumption revenues. And then continuing on, again, $1.25 monthly increase to the system service charge with no increase to consumption-based rate components. And with these proposed changes, as I said before, our residential rates will still be about 10%, 10.3% below SRP-average customers, and we are not proposing any changes to non-residential rates at this time. And to highlight our difference to SRP, our system service charge will still be $9.25 less per month than SRP.
Frank, how many residential customers do we have on the electric side? We're right at about 13,000. I believe we showed that in that one slide up front in the presentation.
Okay. That's good.
About 14,000 customers. Okay, if there's no other questions on the electric side?
Mayor, I want to be sensitive to council's time. Maybe we could hold off on gas. I'd like to really get to water. It's a big part of this enterprise budget. Would that be okay? And we can bring this back at a later time and finish this.
We have a lot of people here for the committee meetings to follow this.
Yeah, so let's just do water, and then we'll just finish with Jake. We'll just stop right there, and then we'll just finish up with Jake. So let's just have Jake.
Okay. Thanks for inviting Frank back later.
Yeah, or the council, you have the presentation in front of you. We can do a future presentation, or if you want to read the presentation, if there's any questions, let us know, and we'll be glad to answer those.
Great, thank you. So those who are here for the committee meetings, we'll get through water, and then I think that's the last thing on our agenda, so hopefully we'll get down to the, well, we're anxious to hear about water. I don't want to shortchange that. Be a few more minutes.
I'm Jake West, Water Resources Department Director. With me this morning is Seth Weld, Deputy Director of our Enterprise Services, and we're here to present you with the Water Resources Department presentation and rate recommendations. What we do here in the city of Mesa is provide safe, reliable, and economically, environmentally responsible water and wastewater services to the community. We have over 148 residential and commercial connections on the water side and 124,000 residential and commercial connections on the wastewater side. We do that through 2,300 miles of water pipes in the water system and about 1,700 miles of pipes in the wastewater system to get to those connections and provide those services. Some of our accomplishments in 2016, we were awarded the Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies Platinum Award for Utility Excellence. This is the second award we've received from this organization. In 2013, we won the Gold Award for Utility Excellence. Some of our areas of emphasis are our southeast Mesa Infra Planning Area. We've got the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, as Beth mentioned earlier. It's going to be scheduled to go into construction first, or, excuse me, it's going to come online in 2018 in May. And then we've got our Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant that we should begin construction in the first quarter of 2018 with a planned to be online in 2020. Our succession plan, what I'll highlight is a successful program that we have. About four years ago, we started an interim program because the positions that we have at these plants, whether they're water or wastewater, they're hard to find those people with the representative skills coming in, and because it's a job that's in demand in the valley, we thought it was best to maybe get these kids out of college and get their interest and bring them on. It's been very successful for us. All but two of the interns we've brought on in the last four years have been hired on here at the city of Mesa. The other two, the reason they weren't hired on in Mesa is they left the state and were hired in this industry somewhere else. Also, our recruitment, because Signal Butte is going to be coming on in 2018, we've got some challenges. We've got to staff that plant. I believe there's going to be 11 or 16 additional positions that we're going to be required to get that plant staffed, and the same is for Greenfield. We're going to, as we move forward and bring them on, and we're getting the processes, we've got ongoing projects. And adjacent to the expansion, we're also bringing on staff and getting them trained and bringing them on to know how to run the plant, so when that goes on in 2020. But that'll be more of a phased approach. It's more critical for the quickness that Signal Butte is coming online. So at this time, Councilmember Freeman, Mayor, I can address that question earlier about the water rights. That was a settlement with the city of Mesa that was in agreement with the White Mountain Apache Indian Community, and we purchased, we came to an agreement for 3,600 acre-feet of water, and the city of Mesa is supposed to pay like $7.8 million for that water. But that is for Mesa's portion of assisting them with the construction of a dam. That work has not been completed yet. It's still at the federal level because this agreement hasn't been ratified. But we put that in our program each year, so in case something does happen at the federal level and it is ratified, we have the funds to meet our obligations.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I've got briefed on the dam issue. There's soil issues, they haven't been able to build the dam yet. But I was visiting with some of our Chandler colleagues. Councilmember Thompson and I had breakfast with them, and they wrote a check for $42 million for water in the Gila River community for their 100-year water supply. So I just want to make sure we weren't doing the same things. We're pretty self-sustaining, self-reliant with water. We're not, even though we have these settlement issues, I just want to make sure that we're not writing checks for $40 million. So I know that the tribes have gotten a lot of water, and they're able to use that as a resource to sell to communities and businesses, and that's their right to do that. So when I heard that, it just raised a red flag and thought I would ask, because that's a big chunk of change.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, that's what this agreement was about years ago, was preparing for such an event. So this is our portion. This does firm up our water supply, this 3,600 acre-feet, but Mesa currently has a 100-year water supply designation by the Department of Water Resources. This is just another component of our portfolio. It helps firm up our ability to maintain and have our 100-year supply for our residents in our community.
And I appreciate that because I think it's very important for the infinite supply of water for our community that we invest in our infrastructure, that be our wells, our canals. Well, we don't have many canal systems, but we have access to the canals to draw water off for water treatment, and we're a unique community having close access to that. So wells are important. Probably land for future well sites is important wherever we can because there's a big push in the community to augment our groundwater supply and storage of groundwater and how it's going to be pumped in the future. So it's going to be something that we need to be cognizant every year.
Right, and we currently have programmed wells into the southeast, part of our southeast focus. It's not only the Signal Butte plant, but we've got additional wells that are coming online, and we're drilling them, and we equip them as needed as they come online in the hopes that when the plant or the canal is down, we're able to feed that water treatment plant with the wells pushing the water into the plant in lieu of the cap water when the canal is out of service.
Thank you. I don't want to labor this discussion anymore, but you know, we have aging infrastructure here on the west side as well, and those wells need to be refurbished or replaced. So we need, if you can't replace a well within a certain distance, then we need to buy land to put a refurbished well in. So just be looking at that, and I'm sure you are because water is the lifeblood of our community.
And we are doing that. We try to get at least one well drilled a year and another one equipped in the second year because it's an expensive process, but we do have an active program. All right. Our wastewater business objective is to supply, or waste, excuse me, is to provide reliable, high-quality, and environmentally responsible services to the fair, reasonable rates. Some of our performance metrics are, is the miles that we clean our pipe. That's how we clean the lines, to keep them, keep them having the blockages. The targets, sometimes based on our system size and the amount of staff and equipment we have, we can't always meet our targets on a monthly basis, annually basis, but a monthly basis. We can have some ups and downs based on the activities, other activities going on in the department. But the real metric is the number of sanitary sewer overflows. For a system our size, it should be about 27 per, excuse me, about 17 events per month per 100 miles of pipe, and we're, which we average to about four and a quarter. Our metric is less than one. We don't like to see any wastewater flowing down the streets, so our target is zero, but we're currently at 1.5, which is still well below the national average. Our business objectives for the water services is to provide water services at a fair and reasonable rate, and those performance metrics are similar. One of them is our meter readers. Our meter readers read about 10, excuse me. Their error factor can be, has to be less than four errors per 10,000 meters read. That's the metric on our, and currently, we're less than that. We're at 3%, 3 meters, less than three errors per 10,000. Our percent groundwater pump, that metric, currently, we're a little bit higher than we'd like to be, but that was due to a canal outage, or I mean, some maintenance at the Val Vista Treatment Plant, so we had to some-plant the city system, that's the SRP system, with our groundwater wells within the city to be able to maintain services. That was a little bit longer of an outage than we typically have in a year, but it was planned for and we were ready for it. So we were expecting to see that metric go up a little bit, and then, once again, okay, here we go.
Excuse me, Jake.
Yes, sir.
Jake, do we ever have third-party damage on our facilities? Or are they just, do we have pipe failures or what have you because of the age of the infrastructure?
Both, Councilmember Thompson and Mayor. We're seeing a lot better locating services that Frank's people, as he was thanking us for the stuff that we do, his staff does our locating, and they're pretty accurate, so we see very few failures. Most of the failures, or the dig-ins that we get are for lines that somebody didn't call for blue stake, or they didn't know where the line was, or they didn't pothole correctly. And the damages, or the water main breaks and leaks, we're at a relatively low, considering nationally, but that's because our system is a little bit younger than the systems in the East Coast. But we do have aging infrastructure, as Beth mentioned. A lot of our systems downtown area, west of, I would say, Val Vista, is, could be anywhere from 60 to older, years or older. So it's that type of pipe. Then the downtown area, it's a metallic pipe. It doesn't really fail catastrophically like what I would call a newsmaking event, but it's that old asbestos cement pipe that was made in the '60s. That's the stuff that we see when we had the failure up on McDowell earlier this weekend. That was a 1964 asbestos cement pipe, and that typically has a failure that the pipe just explodes. We have big cavins and holes. We have to shut the road down for a significant amount of time, so. But our metrics are, we're still lower, well below the national average of, you know, we should have, so we're doing really well.
So are you running, or do you have like a risk assessment tool that you utilize?
Yes, we do. Our engineering group, that's how we do as our water line replacement projects. We're looking at the risk of failure and the consequence of failure, and so... We're looking at the risk of failure and the consequence of failure, and so that we rank those pipes accordingly, and those are the ones that we target on our CIP programs. With the exception of areas where we know we have that 1960 era pipe or the lines are in, these are systems that the city had purchased throughout the years. We've got water lines and meters that are in back alleys, hard access to get to. Some of them are also in areas without sewers, so those, we'll kind of go in and combine to do those. We've got a couple of projects coming up here in the next year. There are going to be water line replacement, gas line replacements, and sewer service, sewer line replacements. So we do take those things into effect, and we try to work with our partners as well to see if their systems need to be replaced.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Just real quick, are we looking at technology to measure the water consumption at each home, so instead of having somebody go to the house and look at that?
We're looking at that, and, excuse me, Vice Mayor Luna, Mayor, we are looking at that. We actually, in partnership with our friends in energy, we're putting down a request for proposal to get a consultant to come in and look at our systems because Mesa's rare and unique in the sense that we operate a water system and a gas and electric system, so we want something. We know the meter reading part of it can be done, but there are certain other components that we want to make sure that we get the right fit for what we're looking for, so that'll be coming to you soon. Currently, we don't do that at this date. We do have a project in water where we will go out to certain, like CMC Steel and some other areas, there are higher water consumptions, and some of those mechanical meters fail more quickly. We're using newer technology with electromagnetic, magnetic meters, and we put the AMI devices on them so that we can't really see it real time at a computer, but we can go out there and we can pull data up to 40 days worth of data and see what their water usage and their consumption patterns are. And we can do that at some residents as well. Currently, we've got maybe 4,000 of those devices throughout the city. Mostly they're in water-only subdivisions or areas due to the fact that it doesn't really pay off to do the gas and the, to go into all neighborhoods that have gas, water, and electric if we're only going to put a device on a water meter.
It just seems to me that with technology nowadays that we would have capacity to automatically go and have that data available instantaneously, so.
We're working in that direction. Okay, enterprise fund. 89% of our revenues come from the rates and the enterprise, and then 11% of that are restricted funds, and most of that is about, 68% of that is the Greenfield Water Reclamation Joint Venture of those restricted funds that come to us as revenue. Significant budget changes for fiscal year 1718. Our water commodity costs, we can address this on another slide in a few moments, that the cost of water is going up. The Greenfield plant infrastructure is, we've got about $270,000 in ancillary projects that are going on to tie in with the expansion of that plant, and so these are the costs for that for this year. And this is Mesa's share of the project. The two partners also pay a portion of that, but that's our share. Chemicals at the plants are going up, and at the Signal Butte plant is, we're expecting more, no more dollars going there because that plant's going to come online in May of 2018.
Jake, I have a question for you on the cost of the water commodity. My understanding is part of the rationale behind the Signal Butte plant, well, that will allow us to take more of our allotment of CAP water. CAP water, I believe, is a little more expensive than some of the other water that we purchase.
Yes.
So will the impact of the Signal Butte plant coming online, will that really be that we're buying more expensive water? Or how does that play out?
No, it's the same water, it's the same cost. We just have, we have a second tap to it. So what we're currently doing today is we're bringing all of that water from the brown road treatment plant down, which kind of, you know, goes through a series of pipe, but it's the same amount of water. We will increase our water purchases throughout the year. I mean, at the beginning of the year, when we have to order our water from CAP, but it will be at the same cost, so, but I don't see, that increase isn't going to happen in 2018. 2018, I believe, January is when the next rate discussions with CAP takes place and they set their new rates. They do that every, every other year. In 2018, the cost will be going up. And there's another slide that we can show you what it's going to look like and projected over time.
So when the Signal Butte plant's online, does that mean we'll require less groundwater and we'll convert more to CAP water?
So Mayor, again, we're pushing, we're taking nearly the same amount of water out of the CAP. We're just doing it up on the north end, but we're having to pressurize the pipes and push it.
I see.
All the way to the south.
Right.
This will certainly help us to take the stress off of the pipes in the system by having it closer in to treat. But it also gives us greater capacity for water treatment that will have multiple plants, and that will really, what this is doing, and I think Beth said it well, is the water will be in place as growth continues in our fastest-growing part of the city, so we'll be able to accommodate that. So eventually, over time, our cost of water will go up only because we'll be treating more.
Right.
Volume of water to deliver to the demand that's being required. But we're not incurring, it's, we've been paying for this allocation of water all this time. Sometimes we resell it, but a lot of times it's just where, it's just the tap is further up, the upstream, and now we can get it closer to the area we're delivering it from.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking of our commodity, water commodity costs, our rates for CAP are going up. As you can see here on the slide to the left, that we've got our cost of the water and then the capital costs is on the top in the lighter shade of blue. And so those costs are going up. And then on the right side, we have our cost based on flow projections and what those costs would be per acre foot. Now, we were talking about our other sources of water. The other source of water is SRP, our Salt River Project water is, they are also, we will also be experiencing increases in the cost of that water, but it's less significant than the CAP water. But as you can see, the cost per acre feet continues to rise up through 2023. Okay. Excuse me. Over the last few years, the city's been, we've been focusing on trying to better align our fixed revenues and with our fixed costs. Our target for fixed revenues is about 35 to 40% of total cost. This year and next year in 201718, we're estimated to be right at about six, just above 36% in fixed cost versus variable cost. Water, excuse me. City implemented for a fourth residential tier to align with tiers in usage patterns and associated costs. This is the third year of our implementation, five-year implementation, and our water rate recommendations will be, we're recommending bringing to the council a 3.5% increase on all rate components. The residential service charge will go up, will go up 93 cents per month, and based on our average usage, that's going to be a difference in the total bill of $1.57. Our current residential tier structure is on the left of this slide. First 3,000 gallons included as a service charge, and you can see with the proposed tier rate structure in fiscal year 1718 and the differences in those tiers. Wastewater utility rate recommendations for fiscal year 1718, we're recommending that all customers receive a 4% increase on the rate components. The residential service charge will go from, will go up 72% per month to, from about 1808 to 1880. You've got to remember, the rate, well, we started rates are not subject to seasonality. The rate is adjusted annually based on the winter water average. That's where they're taking average of the lowest three months from December to March, and then that's what the rate that they pay throughout the year. Any more questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Gentlemen, any questions? Yes, Mr. Whitaker.
What's your anticipated net revenue with this budget?
I can answer that, Mayor. The net sources and uses for the water for 1718 is the, would be a, with everything, a $4.9 million loss for the water with all of this, and then the wastewater is about break even. So total for water and wastewater is about $4.9 million.
All right, thanks. I'm sorry, did you just say the water is, we're going to have a 4.9 loss?
Yes, for Mayor, net sources and uses for the water, yes. In the current year for seven. For current year, we are looking at, for current year, 1617, we are looking at an $8.3 million positive, Mayor, for the current year in water, and a $10 million for wastewater. So total combined, it would be just over $18 million. And this detail is in Attachment 3 in the council report. So we have, with the Attachment 3, we have an overview of the enterprise fund, total enterprise fund, and then we have a schedule showing the rates, the proposed rate, and then we have each individual enterprise fund in the back pages behind that. So there are the individual financials for that.
Got it.
So, but Mayor, with that, we're still able to achieve a significant ending reserve for this forecast period for 1718. We'll just be under 20%. So while those are, they fluctuate oftentimes, we try to smooth out our rates, but oftentimes because of debt service payments or other large impacts of the budget, that number will fluctuate from year to year, but we try to maintain that reserve in that 20 to 20% line. So we were able to do that even with these drawdowns and net losses. Then in some years, because we won't may not have as much of a large, maybe it's the debt service payment or a large capital project, you'll see the differences there.
Okay, and so to the point of the percent of reserve, I kind of thought at the beginning of this presentation, there was a slide that said our goal for reserves for...
Well, let's be careful, but that's, that's the minimum amount.
Right.
So, yeah, we don't want to go below that. And so we forecast usually higher than that, especially in utilities where we can see a lot of fluctuations. So when you see on that Attachment 3, you'll see that we're holding a reserve. We're ending the year, we believe we'll end the year 1617 at almost 22%. So that's why we're comfortable, we're okay with the net losses, because it begins to draw the fund balance down, so that at the end of our forecast period, it's actually closer to 13%. So we're getting closer to that 10. So we try to manage that, kind of a gradual glide, I guess is better way of saying. And so we're comfortable with taking the net losses, especially what's happened too, is we brought on these large projects, our debt service is growing significantly, so we're trying to balance out these modest rate increases, but at the same time, we're willing to take some losses and draw down the fund balance. So we're kind of going a little bit of rates and a little bit of losses to try to smooth things out.
So it sounds very similar to the larger city budget as a whole.
Yeah, that's fair. Yes, that's fair. We don't have quite the same, the demand factors, the pressure points here would be mostly in the large capital component pieces and paying for those, and then bringing on the operating, related operating expenses to pay for that.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I know, again, I appreciate the patience of those who are here for meetings that follow this, so we'll try to...
Mayor, I'd say we're done with the budget presentations at this point. If council has any questions about any of the other presentations or would like us to bring more information back on the subject, we'll be glad to do it at a future time. But I think we've probably exhausted your budget attention for today, and so we'll be glad to kind of pause here and go on to the, if you want to keep going, we're here all day, so.
No. Yeah, we know where to find you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate the presentation. Let's move on to Item 3 on our agenda, which is information related to the current job ordering projects. Any questions regarding those? Seeing none. Next is to, Item 4, Acknowledged Receipt of Minutes of Boards and Committees. Is there a motion? Thank you, and a second? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you. Any opposed? Next is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Any reports? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Brady, help us with our schedule for the next week or so.
Mayor, I think we have our council meeting on Monday. I believe we have some additional presentations on the budget before the council meeting, so we will give you, the start time for that will be probably 4:30, is that what we're saying? Where's Jill?
Four.
Four? Four o'clock. So that'll be an early start time on Monday, and then we'll have another study session on Thursday with more budget presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any other questions or items for this meeting? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.